Regular meeting of the Harrison County Board of Education, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Brings us down to item three, special recognitions and presentations. We have none tonight. Item four, delegations. We do have several delegations, but it's my understanding that the time will be yielded to one speaker. And with that, John Scott of Clarksburg.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Through the course of today, the issue that I was originally coming here to, to bring to the board's attention has been addressed. For all of the other parents, I'd like to thank you all for the hard work you did to get that issue addressed. After talking to the other parents, our other concerns, we believe that over the next few weeks, working with the administration and keeping you all informed of, of what our concerns are and where we're moving to, would be the best way to handle those. So what I would do first is want to thank all the board members for responding to me. I want to thank all the board members for their interest that they've shown in addressing our concerns. I want to say I look forward to working with the administration and working with the board members to resolve what we have seen as issues that have come up in the course of, of this event. But at this time, you know, we will look forward to working with you all over the next couple of weeks to see where we go and make sure that we have our children's health, safety, and welfare as the primary goal. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. It brings us down to item five, superintendent's update. Ms. Studdler?
Yeah, Mr. President, I have quite a few things. First of all, we need to, and I don't know whether this is the right time or not, but we'll have the elementary present and the middle school present. Do we need to schedule? We're looking at the next November meetings for the, you want to do that later?
The next month or at the next meeting?
Like we did today with high school?
So you want to do, which one you want to, we want to break the elementary down or you want to do them all at once?
I think middle school, I think, I think middle school wants to go on the first November meeting.
We're going to have to do that.
And we could probably do four thirty if that works. Now the elementary, you'll have twelve, so.
So break them down.
Break them down. You know what? Here on twelve.
Do you want the second, second meeting and then you still have the second meeting at six, six and seventeen?
Six in November, the end of November or the second?
How about we do the, we do the middle school before the next meeting? And then, and then since we have twelve, the following week in between the first meeting and the second meeting, if we just do one special meeting before that. Then that way we don't have to do twelve schools and then go into a regular meeting. We wouldn't be up against it. You know what I mean?
No, if, if we do them separately, that's fine. I was suggesting six in front of one and six in front of another.
And we can, but then that happens in December. But I, I mean, whatever the pleasure is, but we can either do the middle school before the next meeting. And then the following two meetings do half of each elementary, or we can just schedule one special meeting at like five o'clock and do all, you know, in between the two meetings. I don't know if that sounds something, you know what I mean?
We need to start it sooner than.
Well, we do like, no, because we wouldn't have a meeting afterwards is what I'm saying. If we do all twelve, I don't want to try to do them before a regular meeting because you have to run up against it. So we can either do half of them before a regular meeting or do them all in a meeting by itself. What's, what's the pleasure?
If we do a special meeting, we can do all twelve of them.
Yeah. What do you think?
That's probably better to have them all in the same.
Yeah.
Same thing for twelve times instead of two.
Right. And they kind of could, did it that, right?
Yeah. Well, Election Day would be in there.
It's Election Day.
Right. Well, it doesn't have to be on Tuesday.
I know. And I want to let you know then too, Friday is Veterans Day.
Right. And that'd be the off week, not, not the, that'd be the second. Yeah. So if we did it on Wednesday.
The ninth.
Elementary.
Would that be, I just think it'd be better to.
I think, I think they would prefer to be here all together.
And sometimes like you see right now is it's okay to have it before a meeting, but you run up against it. Maybe there's some other questions you want to answer. Five o'clock?
Okay, just end of the third.
Let's do it. Is Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday, November ninth.
Wednesday be good.
And you want to do it at one time?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock. Hold on.
And we're thinking an hour. Is that what you're saying?
November the first at four thirty.
A bit longer than that, don't.
Correct?
Yes.
That's eleven hundred. Could we start earlier on Wednesday? At four thirty?
It's, it's, I can be.
To be here before four thirty. So if you want to start, I can call in and then I'll just get here when I can, when I can.
If we start five, you'd be here, right?
Yeah, I can be here. I can be here at five.
Because I would need to, I'd need to leave at least by ten to six. So for church.
Unless you want to do Thursday.
No, I think everybody agreed on it. I mean, if we do it, I'm, I'm okay with Thursday.
I'm too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The day of Thursday, the tenth. At four thirty.
Before the Veterans Day.
With ten on it.
We do it at five. That way you get it.
Okay.
I think it's Frankie too.
Five.
For elementary.
Yes.
I'd just rather do them all.
On the first.
On the first one, it would be, now the Tuesday.
Thursday.
Thursday.
What's the Thursday?
Hold on.
It's middle school for the, on the first.
Yes.
Wednesday would be the ninth, the tenth.
Tuesday, the first, we will go, we will go four thirty and then six o'clock our regular. On the tenth, we will go at five o'clock.
Yeah. Okay. He's talking about the ten. That's the next one. You, you don't have chemo then, Dee.
So. Yeah, so.
So you'll be good.
Yeah. And you sent us a.
I did. I will.
Everybody want to go with that?
Are we good?
Yep.
I thought if I didn't bring that up, I would forget to ask for those meetings. I just wanted to also give you an update. I really appreciate the board allowed us to make a halftime position in special ed full time and it was Angie's job. But now I have two coordinators that are available for elementary. So they're dealing with six schools and six schools. So we've been, we've been sending them out, working in the schools and they're coming back with needs assessments for those schools. So you're going to see if we feel there needs to be an aide somewhere. I usually go down and check with Joseph and find, we're trying to make sure we stay within a, a area where we can make sure we can sustain those. So we are finding needs out there. And so when those coordinators come back, working with Mrs. Miller and looking at the numbers in a building, I mean, we are adding staff if they feel they need an aide or a position. So, but we've been pretty progressive in getting out there to check with our buildings. So just to give you a heads up, and I appreciate that. Also, our mental health coordinator has been working with our second chance classroom teachers to provide curriculum and we're getting some good feedback. And at some point, I would like for her to present to you what that is. So they can go in and work with those second chance classroom teachers. So when those kids are there, they're getting value for being in that time. So I appreciate that. That's been very valuable. We've been meeting with the counselors, looking at, they were here actually this week. So we're having regular meetings with counselors, which we hadn't had for a long time, getting their feedback, finding out what their needs are. And we're finding in some of our larger schools, we're going to attempt to add counselors. We've got some positions open right now. I know Bridgeport High and Middle was in need just because of numbers and that job is posted. So I just appreciate that. We're going to be progressive and, and looking at that, we're going to get to a number. I'll bring that to you. We're getting in the personnel season on what we feel we can be comfortable with for overages. And thank goodness to Harrison County for our excess levy because there is a portion of that, it is for salaries. And I believe Harrison County residents and our voters have said that is to operate our schools. So, and that's why it was put in there for salaries and that's what we'll use that for. So I, you, you have no idea how grateful we are because I do get to visit and, and visit other counties and see what's happening. And you know, there, there's just not a lot of money there. I know we're looking at some things down the road that may be taking revenue from us, but I do appreciate that. And we are addressing mental health issues. And thank you to the family that's, that was here and our delegation. I know we've had conversations with him. He came in and met with us. And, and every time we have conversations and sit down as a group, we find areas that we need and it really comes from dialogue and discussion. And we just want to work with folks to make that happen, to do what's right for the schools and the students. So I can't really say enough about that, but we'll get you a firm number on what we can do for overages and what, that's what we're going to use. We're going to use that to fill needs in the, in the schools. Get, sometimes they just need a set of hands to be out there. So I just want to tell you, we're being pretty progressive with that to look at needs because we are going into personnel season. So, and I just appreciate it all. The facilities, if you'll look in your packet, this has just come up. We've got issues at Bridgeport High School with their bleachers. They're not repairable. Mr. Lopez has been out there with Mr. Dennison. He brought it to me. It's Huffman Company. That is on a co-op to buy bleachers. So it doesn't, it's not something that we have to bid. They actually did the bleachers, I believe, at Victory. And so they're, they're beautiful. They did a nice job. Well, there is money in the school fund to do that. So I wasn't sure. Matt is ready to move forward. He does have the money and facilities to do that. And I think Mr. Lopez was there. We've talked about it and he would like to move forward. I just wasn't sure since it's that price, whether, it's their money. I didn't know, I didn't think you needed action, but I thought you might want to see that.
Yeah. It's on state contract. We would need action.
Huffman. It's in that packet. That would complete theirs. Then our next big thing will be Robert C. Bird's bleachers. We'll address that. But fortunately, we were able to fund this one.
Why is it, why would it not have to be?
Because it's on state co-op.
They, they, it's, it puts them on a.
Yeah, it's a, it's a source well project.
Mrs. Studdler.
Yes.
So, so public and anybody that's watching would know, so it won't look like that we're just giving a particular school a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars.
Right.
They.
This would be from their, and again, our levy, our excess levy and the facilities money that was provided to those schools. He has, he has that in a fund there at his school. So that's what that would be used for. It will deplete it, but he has the money to do that. So, and it is a high need.
And so every high school and middle school gets monies every year. And so he's a.
Very nice.
Is that a spring project?
Yeah.
No, we're, actually, the reason why he wants to move forward with it, because I believe they would like to complete it prior to basketball season. So.
That's why it was kind of quick to get it on there. He contacted me and gotten the estimate, but.
The total amount is about a hundred and eighty thousand. No, I was never a great math student, but just.
And they are, that's for.
He has, he has, he's not asking us for a dime.
They did. We are going to try to remove the old bleachers and that's to try to save of money for the overall project. That's what I'm saying. So we may be able to remove that, say, and get it out. Yes, exactly.
The, the guy that, that actually services the bleachers there had a conversation with, with Mr. Dennison and he, they're not even repairable. They can't even, they went to pull them out for a game. They're not, the mechanisms are not even working. He said, they're just not even repairable.
That's the place, Dean, at the high school.
At the high school.
Those bleachers are very old.
Well, the, the ones in the, the stage where they took, they demoed the stage and they added the bleachers. The other bleachers are, I can't give you the date, but they're.
I don't know. Yeah. I, I don't know that they've ever been. I mean, I'm taking that from Mr. Dennison. So that's what spurred getting it. I said, get an estimate.
To me, I mean, it's no brainer. It's, it's on the contract. He's got the money. So I would have him to go forth. There's no objection.
No objection.
I just didn't know whether you needed an action on that or not. Also, you'll find later on and down in finance, we did get our audit from the twenty-one, twenty-two school year that is in there from Teacher Kit Bartlett. And the other thing that we've really started pushing out, and it's all part of the mental health aspect, and it's really being pushed back out by the state is the Safe Schools Helpline. So that number is going to be pushed out on the app and really available. And we do get calls. I mean, they contact us because kids or parents or anybody can call that number anonymously and they contact us and we can reach out whether we need to get law enforcement involved or counselors or whatever these kids need or even families. So we're going to, we're really working to push that out and make that available. It was big for a while and now the state's really expanded it. And they have folks available to answer the phone for these kids or parents or whatever. And it, it's for really about anything you wish to call. Just to give you a heads up, that's kind of being revamped and it's a safe school helpline. I believe if you had the opportunity, Todd Poole did an interview on, on, what's it, WBOI? They came in and so I kind of sent them down to Mr. Poole to talk to him about the Safe Schools Helpline. Because I think he initially was one that kind of got this started in Harrison County a few years ago. So that's it. We got a lot of things going on and so appreciate everybody and we're going to move forward. And I don't know whether you had anything, Mr. Lopez?
Well, just real quick. So we have four individual pieces of property that we know it's a priority to try to sell. The Reese Building, Off Creek, Adamston, of course, the Bristol Terminal. So we just kind of planned this in two phases. First phase is to try to work with coffins, online auction, do an online auction for both the Reese and the Lost Creek Building. You should see that rolling out pretty soon. The contracts will be in the hands of the superintendent tomorrow morning. We also will be listing the furnishings in the Lost Creek Building. And there's, there's a lot. There's a lot of stuff for sale that will be for sale and those items will go for pretty good money. So, and, and that people can bid on those and you've probably seen the online auction before. We've had a lot of success with that. Selling furnishings, buildings, school buildings, and also school buses. So, and, and we'll be looking at that in the future. The, the second phase will be trying to log and do an online auction with the surplus furniture at both Adamston and at Lincoln, Lincoln's basement. So that's a goal of ours to do that after this auction. And then try to do either an auction or whatever we're going to do with Adamston and also the Bristol Terminal, which will be recorded in the courthouse probably by the end of the month. We've been working with the attorney and getting it, it worked, getting it a platform. So the, we did meet with Shannon Cunningham with Central West Virginia Community Action. She did contact me today. They are still interested in the building at Adamston regardless of how we, they acquired. So they still want to look at it. They're going to schedule a meeting with Danny and I to go over and bring some of their people over to look at it to see if it'll accommodate their needs before they move forward. So we do have a little bit of time for that decision we're needing. I did want to, I did want to say that it is National School by Safety Week during the, you know, the week of October the seventeenth through the twenty-first. And, and I will say that, you know, school, this, school transportation saves transportation in the nation for our children, for anybody actually. Would be nice to see more students riding the school bus. It might eliminate some of the traffic issues that we have in some of our school zones, but I understand that's, that's up to parents. But we do a lot of educational things with our bus drivers and they go out and they facilitate some of that learning in the schools with our free K students. Some kids have never ridden a school bus or may never ride a school bus. And they do a great job of volunteering and going out doing that. That's been an ongoing process since the beginning of the year. We do have two new substitutes, bus operators, that I believe will receive, you guys will approve promissory notes. Very quality. We've been getting some good quality. Not a lot of numbers. I think we're going to be up to seven. And we should, the next meeting, get the eight substitutes. And that's, that's very promising because the ones that we get, we vetted them extremely well. And there's a good fit for what they need to do for us. They'll be able to sustain their occupation with us. So that's.
Will you like that ten?
We have, it, it'll be nine.
I mean, what do you like? What's your magic number? Ten?
Well, ten is, is, you know, there, there's a fine line there. To get them, you're hoping that they're all going to get to work every day because they still need to pay their bills. And, and that's probably eight to ten is, is probably.
And you're also coming into the cold and flu season. You need to be able to.
Oh, yeah. We have a lot of illness. We have several bus drivers that just on the cusp of being able to retire. And they've hung in with us and they, you know, so they're true.
It used to be two or three years before you'd go full time. It's happened where it's six months.
Those eight drivers may be full time with that year.
You still have several subs in long-term runs right now for, yeah, illnesses or surgery.
So then over the past several years, even with the shortage of bus drivers, and we've been able to make every bus run. We've not left any kids behind. They may have missed the bus, but we've ran those routes. So we're pretty proud of them. It's, it's a great department and they do an excellent job. So I just wondered, I don't get the chance to hear good news a lot.
What about the houses? What we got?
Well, I'm just waiting on direction from superintendent and it, you know, we can do the same thing with those houses, especially the ones that are.
The auction.
Yeah.
Once we get those. With set fee, if we get an evaluation, what they call.
Get them appraised. Yeah, absolutely.
And then saying, we will cut the bill for last time.
Mr. Lopez, where are we on our secure entrances?
Uh, that is going to begin, that project is going to begin as early as next week. So.
Where?
Oh, that's it. Not report. We talked about, not report on both sides. So, and it should be completed by Thanksgiving. So they're going to come in and start working in the evenings a little bit. But we want that, those entrances to be fully functional when the students come back after Thanksgiving.
Who's, who's doing that?
City construction, Thrasher's engineer, the architect.
I will say Mr. Lopez is out recruiting because I was just talking to a guy yesterday at Home Depot and he said, Mr. Lopez just talked to me about being a sub. And he was.
Did that quite free?
Yeah, well, he was working. He's working. Somebody said, I'm considering that.
I tell you, if you can get, if it's a good fit for an individual, it, it, it's a great occupation.
His dad was a long time bus driver. So.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. The other thing with Victory, just to give you an idea, we, it's, I think it's paid for now, right? We just made our last payment and drawdown from the SBA. So we're, we're good there. Those are a process to get through a building renovation.
Trying to make some extra money and pay your.
Mr. Lopez, it's a, it's a busy time when we're in construction. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Moves us down to consent items and I need a motion to approve the consent items.
I'm going to approve the consent items.
There's a second. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business, bus driver promissory note. See two there? Just just to think we've had these before, but just since, you know, remember, we do a promissory note just basically once they accept the job to reimburse them for their training cost. And that used to be a big thing was, you know, you're asking a guy to go through training, and he's not working anyway, and we're not giving him time, and then they had to pay you on top. So we reimburse it. It's been really, that's why we have a
The retention rate's been impressive.
So well worth it.
It's six months.
Six months.
Another county's have a
Can't all turn down any more than three sun.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the bus driver promissory note.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Out of state travel study request. It's in front of you there. Is there a motion?
Make a motion. We approve out of state travel study requests.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Preschool budgets and contracts for 2022, 2023. Those are ongoing contracts, agreements, renewal agreements for Head Start, Lasting Impression Cubbies, Mother Goose Land and Jungle Junction. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve all the preschool budget programs for 2022, 2023 school year. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Kristy Horn is here. So I appreciate she works hard to get all this stuff together. There's a lot of business pieces to getting all this pre-K work together. And we have worked the last couple of years to get pre-K under one umbrella. And she has taken that on and done a great job. So I appreciate that.
No old business, no policy updates. Brings us down Personnel Matters. It's in front of you with an agenda adjustment as well, personnel agenda adjustment. And that's Employment of Leeanna Hinesman, substitute teacher effective October 19th, 2022. Resignation of Leeanna Hinesman, our teacher, full-time 200-day employment term. Itinerant schedule, South Harrison Middle High School, effective October 18th. And the employment of Timothy Maxwell, substitute custodian, effective October 19th. And resignation of Timothy Maxwell, special education aide, full-time 200-day employment, 8:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., Northview Elementary, effective October 19th. Is there a motion on the?
I'll make a motion for Personnel, move pursuant to subsection 6-9A4 of the West Virginia Code that the board go into executive session to discuss personnel and personnel matters, which if discussed in public, might affect diversely the reputation of any person.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? This is the session.
To return from the seconded session.
Seconded.
Moved to seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries, brings us down to the matter at hand, personnel matters. Is there a motion?
Let me give a motion that we separately pull the administrator job at South Harrison High School. Move on it separately.
Been a motion to vote separately on that, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed, motion carries, so that brings us down to the, we will take that one by itself, the recommendation for Ron Keener as principal, South Harrison High School. Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation?
What, I'm saying.
A motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation for Ron Keener as its principal.
I'll make a motion, wait a second, superintendent's recommendation, it's personhood.
Is there a second? Chair will second. All those in favor, are you in any discussion first? I'm to the chair, I did an interval of six. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Aye.
Aye. Abstain.
You need to stench your breath.
I abstain because I don't feel that there are enough interviews done. So my question will be to superintendent, is there anyone that you would bring back as a recommendation? And other candidate as a recommendation?
No.
Mr. President, is it appropriate to ask to redo the, redo the count? The vote?
Certainly, we haven't closed the count, if you, case of your vote from abstention to a or n, you can do that.
I will vote in the affirmative, aye.
With that, then, then, I mean, is there a question that we need to poll the, I mean, just to vouch the record, then, Mr. Ho?
Uh.
You vote aye or?
I vote in favor, Mr. Keener.
Mr. Devano?
I would like it recommended that I first voted to abstain, and then I asked for a revote, and my revote cast as aye.
Aye, from the chair, Mr. Tucker?
Nay.
Ms. Smith?
No.
With that, the opinions chairs that the motion passes, that brings us to the remainder of the personnel agenda, I believe there is two recusals.
Yes, on my behalf, I have to recuse myself from the, my daughter Amanda Ferris is on the agenda to be hired at Washington Irving Middle School as a special education teacher.
I recuse myself, my wife is going from one position to another job in the county office.
Okay, with the remainder of the personnel agenda, including the personnel agenda adjustments, and the notable recusals on the items for Mr. Ho and Mr. Tucker, is there a motion to accept the remainder of the personnel agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries, brings us down to, board member, actually, there's no legal disciplinary matters, board member comments, Mr. Tucker?
Yes, thank you all, it's Dave, thank everyone that came today, and for the principals who came and presented, we certainly appreciate that, and for anybody that's live streaming at this time, we like to see the whole place filled up every time. Thank you all.
Ms. Smith?
Nothing, Sebby.
Mr. Ho?
No.
Mr. Devano?
I would like to ask going forward in the future that we try to do what we can, even if we have qualified candidates, that we be more inclusive than the amount of candidates that we, that we go ahead and interview.
And I don't have anything other than, you know, I'm hopeful that we can work on situation with some parents out there in victory, and I'm sure we can, and promote our community going forward.
If I could, real quickly, I didn't, in my comment, but I do want to stress that the principal, Ms. Dick, has done a wonderful job, she's been great through contact, she is the one above and beyond in dealing with the situation with these students, you all have an excellent employee, and I would like that noted for great.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Thank you. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved to second by Mr. Devano, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Children, please, children, please.